I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Ed has commanded.
I'm late, I'm not excused.
Okay. Pardon me again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ed, how's Alba?
It'd be the honor.
Thank you.
Ed, can you hear me? It's gonna be an echo. There's a speaker right behind you.
I can speak up.
Well, I don't want to get a speaker right behind you. I don't want to sit there and blow you off of your chair.
Which is your good ear, Ed? Those come in a backpack?
Okay, agenda review. Do we have anything? For action items, we had the minutes payroll manifest, veterans credit, an elderly exemption, intent to cut wood, need a motion for the chair to sign the certificate of weight for the diesel truck.
Make a motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
This is for the diesel truck. It's additional weight. It's in the red folder.
What is this again?
It's for the diesel truck. It's additional weight because it's heavier than normal, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah. So just need a motion for the chair to sign it. Ed, I mean Gary made the motion and do we get a second? Okay. Any discussion on that? Can you hear? Okay?
No, this is, I can hear you important here this.
Okay. Well, then you get to hear me twice.
Speak up.
Okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I have a question about the intent to cut. Okay. Before we, when we sign these, I'd be interested to know if there's any way for us to make sure that they're following the proper procedures when they're doing it. I mean, we just signed it and off it goes and we don't know if it's being done properly.
Well, I do know that we had a problem with this last year. I think it was up on the Pippin Road. The way they had gone into the woods there, all the water was flowing out onto the road, creating ice dams and stuff like that. Nobody was checking it, you know?
I know the road agent did go up and check that out. But the forester was here today, so I spoke with him and I asked him, you know, what the selectmen can do. And the RSA is pretty clear. Once they submit an application, the board has 15 days to sign it. And as long as they've completed four aspects, the board really has to sign it. And that's just that they have the owner's name, it's legible, it's not cutting unproductive current use land, and one other area on there. Other than that, I asked him, you know, could we put conditions on it? And there's not really a lot that we can do as far as the road goes. If we're trying to protect our road coming, you know, off a person's piece of land. He just said, we really need to speak to the New Hampshire Timber Association because if you try to make a lot, the loggers, put a bond down for the road, we need to treat everyone fairly. So that would be all the dumpster people, the oil trucks, everything that's heavy. So, you know, I mean, we do look and make sure that they don't owe back taxes. We make sure it's filled out properly.
About any impact on steep slopes and stuff?
Well, if it's their property, then the only thing that we can do, like George addressed it last year. Of course, it was after the fact, they had altered their own driveway, so to speak.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking about they're allowed to make a road per se to cut, but it's it's supposed to be just that, not more than that. I'm just, you know.
Well, it's supposed to be fixed too when they're done.
Yeah. Seems like there should be.
So I think, yeah, you know, certainly we can have the road agent go and look. The forester really is concentrating on the cuts. He doesn't have enforcement power for our roads.
Does he come back in afterwards, the forester?
Typically go and check a cut. Sometimes they'll get a complaint directly and they'll go out and check it and just see the operation. They they have changed the law. There used to be a barrier, sort of a basal barrier that they could not go beyond. Now they can go all the way out to the road. Yeah.
That's kind of tough. They start just cutting away and all of a sudden the road's washing out, eroding because of the way they cut or the property. We end up with that on our.
So I suppose the way to go is legislatively. And see if they can change the RSA to say that each, you know, if the roads are impacted, then there's a consequence that the town can have the ability to recoup damages.
Kind of liability anyway.
Yeah. I mean, that's something, that's probably the way we would need to go, I would think.
I mean, we could do a bond. We could force them to do bonds, but we have to have everyone do bonds.
So if you do the RSA for the intent to cut, then that's narrowing it to the ones that are cutting. So maybe that's the way we try to pursue it. We can't be the only town that has this issue, so.
I'm sure.
All right. Then there's a prior employment letter for new business. It was the ERZ renewal certification. And then there was a shore land permit. This might be fairly quick. Informational items. Do we want to discuss the fire department here or?
The, his increase in budget?
Yes.
I think when you get ready to do the warrant articles, then you can discuss probably the budget before the warrant.
I didn't bring my warrant articles out.
Oh, are they still back there? I can go and grab them.
That's just one of those days. Okay, so we'll discuss that. All right, so go to public announcements. I believe we have public hearings next week for both the school budget and the town budget. School budget will be Monday, February second, third, oh, eighth.
Second.
February 28th. February 28th, January 28th, and then February for the town. Yes. All accessible on Zoom. Oh, it's one of those days. Is there any public announcements for anybody that's on there? Okay. Go ahead, Margaret.
Diane, I just wanted to say, I think it's January 31st. That's the Monday.
Yeah. Oh, thank you. January 31st.
Okay, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Just the public.
Public, public hearing for the school. Yeah. See, you're having the day I'm having. Okay. So we have no department heads here. I'm just going to skip around here.
That idiot.
And we'll do the we'll do these. I don't know if you had a chance to see those. Okay. All right. How would you guys like to approach the warrant articles?
And did you want to talk about the budget first?
Yes.
Before the warrant. Ed, if you want to take one and pass it down, please. That's the request from the fire department.
Having trouble with paper.
Everybody is very risky today. Okay, did you want to go over this, Karen, or?
I spoke with both the chief and the deputy chief, Will Bartels. They're asking, they're concerned with their overtime line and their payroll budget simply because they know they're going to have a person out for quite some time. They're currently only able to fill some of that remaining shift with overtime. So they're asking that you increase the part-time line by $10,000, which actually brings it up to last year's figure. And they feel that, you know, that would, that would provide them, you know, a safety net because they are unsure how long they're going to be in this situation. And the next one, as, as Will has explained, the uniforms, the cost is going up. They felt the level fund of 3,400 was not enough. He's asking for 1,000 more, 4,400. The protective equipment, he's, again, he feels that to try to budget last year's figure will not cover the cost of gear. He's looking at two sets of turnout gear. And he's asking that we level fund, well, not level fund, we give him 10,000.
So right now, what is budgeted on that line? 7,000?
Oh, right now it's 7,000. Last year it was 10,000. We did instruct him to go out and
Purchase.
Purchase whatever they could from last year's budget. But again, he still feels that 7,000 is not going to be adequate.
And he wants to increase it by 5,000. What we have already in there now.
Yeah, he felt.
6,000, I'm sorry.
Right. He felt, if, oh yeah, if you come in at 13,000, if we come in at 13,000 for 2023, it will be looked at as a $5,000 increase. And I think he's really only asking to go back to 10,000.
On the protective gear?
Yes.
That's what it looks like. So instead of 7,000, he wants to go up 3,000 more.
At the 10,000 level, is our annual need or more?
If we commit in 13 for 2023.
So he's saying to make up the 3,000. So actually, it would be a $3,000 increase. Or actually to put back in the, what was originally budgeted of 10,000.
Right, the 10,000.
Yep. Level fund it.
And then finally, the equipment maintenance. He's asking that you support their figure of 23,000 instead of 18,000. So that's an increase of 5,000.
Now, they also have the new ambulance. It's not going to really require anything. I would imagine that should be fully covered for how many miles? I'm not sure, so.
I thought he, wasn't he talking about not replacing the tires or something like that too?
Well, he did mention it needs tires because even though we've submitted a grant, if it were to be approved, it would be 2023 before we'd even probably be able to get a new vehicle.
Last year, he only spent 19,000 in vehicle maintenance.
Right.
Wants to go up four more thousand.
And that was with the other ambulance too. What's the question is, I mean, the tower truck definitely needs tires. I can't move without new tires.
Right.
The only reason I'm asking is because, you know, 2023 is if the grant passes. How often, I mean, how often did he say the tower truck went out?
I don't, I don't recall the number.
Calls, yeah.
No.
Okay, so. Do you want to discuss each section, part-time, then go to uniforms, protective equipment? Thoughts, comments?
There isn't much they can do about the part-time overtime thing. Bringing the guy in that's going to save on the overtime. He's going to fill the shifts, right?
Yes.
Pretty much.
He's right. He's going to be able to fill a lot of the shifts, but as you know, they still have 48 hours.
Yeah, they still have to pay.
Still have to be filled, so.
What, 12 weeks, it says, so.
Is he the only part, the only one part-time person that can help with that?
According to the chief, there's really only that one part-timer that can commit to doing
Any time in 12 weeks, there's only one person. He's reached out to everybody.
That's what the deputy chief also stated as well. He said that they just, that to try to get people to fill the shifts now. You know, I think they have the administrative assistant, whatever, if you will, covering only about two or three hours per week, I think, is what she's doing at this time, so. Until she gets cleared. I mean, are you, I'll ask, because, you know, you were very instrumental in the budget, Karen. Are you comfortable with the budget right now as it stands?
Well, I think it's a good budget. I, I think the numbers are fair. I would not be opposed to increasing the part-time line by 10,000.
Okay.
That would level fund what it was last year.
Those are separate lines though, part-time and overtime, correct?
Right, totally separate. Yes.
So you're specifically talking about just the part-time line?
Just the part-time line.
Which is, he's asking for either or, I think. Either or. Part-time or overtime?
No, he, he would like to see it in the part-time line as well.
Okay.
10,000 in each?
10,000 just in the part-time to increase, increase that figure.
To what, 165?
Yes, right now it's 155, 173. So if you add 10,000, it will be 165, 173.
Any comments, thoughts, direction?
Well, last year he had 165,000 in there, which is what he's asking for again.
Right.
But he only spent 104,000.
Right, you have to, you, you have to look down on his full-time. You notice full-time, he spent 355,000, only budgeted 339, and he spent 71,000 in overtime. He was only budgeted for 20. Now, when you add all those up, he still came in within budget, but it's just being down full-time people and trying to fill those. And, and the only way he was able to fill the empty shifts were with his current crew that did overtime. And, and it's tough because whenever a full-timer does overtime, it also hits your retirement line as well. You know, it hits several, right, several other areas, you know. So we were able to bring in four part-time and, you know, we were hoping they would be able to fill in these 48 hours and shifts. But according to the chief, they just have not come forward.
One has been able to, I think. He's been taking all, most of the hours, I think.
Did you reach out to them at all, Karen?
I have not called them personally after one of the part-timers stepped up to be able to fill all the shifts of the full-timer that's out. So that helps us immensely.
Yeah.
So further communication probably needs to happen because if, if the others are not able to put in any time at all, then, you know, I, I don't know that they need to be on the payroll.
I mean, do we have anything or does the fire department have anything in writing that says you you need to do, say, one shift a month in order to stay?
We do, we have a policy for the call people. They have to do a certain amount of training and, you know, be available. For new hires that are just part-time to try to fill Kelly hours, we really don't have anything. And I don't know that, you know, we certainly can't force people, but just to try to get a commitment, you know, for a few hours when they're hired. You know, we've suggested putting the schedule out to those people first to see what availability they have, then fill the rest of the schedule. But, you know, the chief has relayed that they're just not able to put in time.
I think there's a lot of departments that are facing the same issue.
I think so. It's, we are not alone, absolutely.
So what is the will of the board?
I think on that line, I think we're fortunate that this guy stepped up. And I think it does work to our advantage.
Are you comfortable adding 10,000 to the part-time line?
Yeah, I think I am too.
Yep.
I'm fine with adding it to the part-time line, but I, I just would reiterate that they need to try to fill these part-time slots and be more aggressive on how to do that. If that means adjusting scheduling for full-time people, then they need to be open to that. And I don't, honestly, I don't, I have not got the indication that they are.
And Ed, you're good with that? Ed? You're good with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So 10,000 will be added to the part-time line?
Mm-hmm.
Uniforms. So he is looking for $1,000 to level fund, right? No, we were level funded. He wants, he wants $1,000 more for uniforms. What's everybody's thoughts on adding 1,000 for the uniforms?
Well.
Do we have something I need out? I mean, do we think we're going to hire somebody or is there?
Well, they're trying to. Well, he's putting, he wants another 3,000 in personal equipment. And he's, and it's because of new members and full-time staff turnout gear. So I guess he's assuming, I mean, I have to assume that 7,000 isn't going to be enough for the for the new members.
Well, I don't know if any of them are expiring too, because don't they expire, the turnout gear?
Yes, I'm sure they have a life, like a shelf life.
So I don't know if it necess, I don't know if it's maybe a couple of firefighters turnout gear is up for expiration. I'm not sure.
And he only spent 4,000 last year.
Ed, do you have a thought?
I'm sure that they could make do without this, this increasing the uniform line. Maybe what they need to do is go back through their roster, see who doesn't show up very often before they replace all the personal equipment. And they won't replace it all. It ended up in somebody else. That's my point. Some of that equipment even was an issue, just like brand new. So talking about uniforms, right?
Yeah. And what did they?
I was kind of thinking that they were late together, but they're not.
For protective equipment?
Four, 4,038.
Yeah, 4,038. But I think they were watching their lines because they, you know, they were spending so much trying to fill shifts that they were.
I think we, we realized there's some scheduling issues over there that have to be looked into and corrected. When it comes to the gear and things that they're working with, I think those guys are pretty level-headed about it and try to make do with what they've done, so they just can't anymore, or they don't have enough. They're very budget conscientious when it comes to the equipment and that stuff and their building and so I think when they're asking for some of this, they probably need it. That's just my opinion.
Did they initially, they initially asked for this, Karen, I think, or no?
Asked for the, this, yes, so.
We didn't cut this though, did we?
Well, we had them, once we found out what we had left in the 2021 budget, we went back to the department heads and said, purchase what you can to try to level fund your budget.
Right.
So invoices came in and so then I reduced the numbers back down to level fund. And so then this has come since then.
Did they purchase anything for a protective equipment or personal equipment?
Personal equipment. They, in November, they bought some pants, jackets, nameplates. I don't see a huge expenditure in that one, no.
Is that a uniform or personal?
That's personal equipment.
Protect, I think the protective equipment, it looks like they spent 3,000, I think. Did they gear, did they get some gear for the protective equipment? 690?
Again, this is the 2-690. And it's in November, nameplates, work pants, high-visibility jacket and liquid, liquid wash.
How much was that? How much was that?
Let me give that to you. They were each, hopefully, that's only about seven hundred dollars worth.
So if they spent seven hundred dollars worth, where, where did we get the cut for the three thousand? I guess, if it was ten thousand initially? Because he said that they spent extra at the board's request in two thousand and twenty-one, and that they cut the line by that much. So did something else maybe get put into the protective equipment, or?
No, only that, only that they weren't spending the money because they had, you know, been going over trying to, to fill the shifts. So they cut back in other areas that, you know, they didn't expend all the funds. However, again, you know, we said to go out and purchase what you were looking to purchase in two thousand and twenty-two out of the funds from two thousand and twenty-one.
And when we asked them to do that, they only, they spent seven hundred dollars. Is that what you're saying?
That is all that hits that line in the uniform line. They did buy pants, uniforms, more pants. But again, that only comes to about seven hundred dollars worth.
So I, I guess my question is, where did we cut three thousand dollars out of the normal ten thousand?
Well, I went based on the fact that we had told the department heads to buy what you needed to.
The question is, why did they only spend seven hundred dollars if we asked them to buy what they needed?
I don't know. I don't know. Okay. I think, you know, for one thing, if it's turnout gear for new members, I mean, they can't just go out and buy turnout gear. They have to wait.
Yes.
Just, it has to fit the person.
Right.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I get that.
So what is your recommendation, Karen?
For the uniforms, it's a thousand dollars. If you want to, I think that can stay at thirty-four-hundred.
Okay.
I think if, if you're going to increase the other protective equipment line and they don't need that, they can always, the board can always allow them to move some funding to support other needs.
Okay. And the protective equipment? Do you think we should level fund at the ten thousand?
At the ten thousand. I would say yes, now seeing that, you know, they didn't spend, spend a lot.
Okay. Is everybody comfortable with not increasing six-thirty, but increasing six-ninety and just level funded at the ten thousand it was last year?
Yep. Yeah.
Okay. You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because as you've said, that, as far as the uniform thing, if they run into a GM account, you can work with them or.
Exactly.
Okay, but, yep, good.
Okay. So right now we have an increase of thirteen thousand in the equipment maintenance. So.
And they said the twenty.
Five thousand.
Twenty-three.
Which is.
Is what they had last year.
Right.
No.
Last year they had eighteen thousand.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, okay, spent nineteen. They want it back to twenty-three, like it's.
Oh. Prior to two thousand and twenty-one, it was always twenty-three thousand.
They still only spent nineteen last year.
Right.
I don't think. Plus, the ambulance is brand new, correct?
Yes.
Correct. So. Yes, and let's see if it is.
Like everything else, the cost of everything is going up. That's what I think they mean here with current inflationary pressure and the known expensive tires. Eighteen thousand is not gonna make it for the year.
Then again, though, you got brand-new commander truck, right? He has the, the brand-new truck, so that's gonna not have any maintenance on it. You got the brand-new ambulance. That's not gonna have any maintenance on it, because that should be covered. The truck that was expensive, that we no longer have, or else that actually became what, the backup command car? The truck that used to be the command car became the backup command car?
Correct.
Right, so.
Yeah, utility vehicle, I think.
Right, utility.
Karen, if they mentioned or looked into, they were supposed to look into the other, the old ambulance, getting rid of it?
I haven't heard back, uh, the, the latest on that. There were a couple of other towns that were interested.
Yeah.
And the chief was gonna reach out to those towns and ask them just to give us some bids. But I don't have anything yet.
Okay. And what is your recommendation that you feel for six-sixty-one?
Well, certainly the sale of that ambulance.
Replenish.
You know.
That's what I'm thinking.
Certainly go into a, you know, a fund for them.
Now, do we have any, do we have any funds?
We have revenue accounts for sale of municipal property. So we could absolutely put it in there, and then if needed, we, they could spend out of that if.
So there is funds available if, for whatever reason, they have to go over because of something breaks down or whatnot?
Uh, not really.
Okay.
No. No, but what I'm saying is we can use the funds from the sale of the ambulance to help if they go over in this line this year, or if they have an unexpected repair that causes them to go over in that line. So we would have that resource.
Rick, you said they spent nineteen last year?
Yes.
Yep.
And that was with the old ambulance and not a new command truck? So, right, get there's inflationary measures, but that kind of should offset some of that.
Again, because the, the truck is still under warranty, full warranty, and, and the ambulance is under, I don't know how long the warranty is for an ambulance, but I would imagine it's at least, you know. Is there a warranty on the ambulance?
Or I would have to check with the chief and see, they may have gotten extended warranty.
Right, but it's, it's covered.
Yeah.
So they're, they're, what did they, they spent nineteen, and they have what, eighteen?
Eighteen.
Three for the tires, so now they're down to fifteen? Am I reading that right?
Well, yes, you are.
Now, um, I'm just, I'm, I'm just thinking that, you know, you always, for whatever reason, we've always been able to find it in the budget. I mean, I, I'm comfortable staying at eighteen thousand. And we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. If you're saying that the ambulance sells and we'd have funds that we'd be able to replenish that line with at the end of the year due to the sale of the ambulance.
Right, and, and to put in the revenue account, not just replenish the line.
But, you know, in the revenue account, right.
And again, if something major happens.
Right. I mean, if there's something major, we have.
It's not like we shut them all down, yeah.
We also have a capital reserve for, you know, heat, um, heat, electricity, fuel. So I think we're pretty well-covered there.
Does anyone want to increase it?
I think it looks good at eighteen.
I'm good with eighteen, Karen.
Karen?
Yeah, except it's really fifteen when they get the tires.
That's.
I know, but we can.
When they get the tires.
With, as you said, we can, if they have something, we can find it, we can work with them. If they sell the ambulance, the money is there. I'm good with it.
Yeah. Ed, you good with keeping it at eighteen? Yeah. And keep in mind too, I mean, uh, they have the ability to go before the budget committee and, and, you know, ask for, and give their justification for it, which you'll, yeah, Thursday night, so. I think, so we'd be looking at increasing the fire department's budget by thirteen thousand dollars, of which ten will be in the part-time line and three thousand will be in the, I just lost my brain, protective equipment. So, okay. Now we'll move to warrant articles.
Happy joy, happy joy.
Most of these are similar to last year. If I remember correctly, there was only one we had that went up in funding. I think it was one of the highway ones that we had bumped down to seventy-five or fifty, but it ended up being washed because it was one that we increased too, so.
Yep.
Okay.
And I'll need a vote on each warrant article?
Okay.
Well, you don't have to read them. I mean, you, you have them in front of you. Right. And the budget committee will read them and vote on them.
Yes, you get to read the whole first one, right? I don't think we need to look at the, um, Article one will have to do with us, but I think we, we'll start at Article three.
And you only have to do monetary articles.
Right. All right, so then Article four would be raise and appropriate eighty-five thousand five-hundred-and-fifty for the fifth payment of the five-year lease. I'm just gonna paraphrase.
Right, absolutely.
For the fire pumper. And it's a special warrant article.
I think a motion to accept.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And that's gonna be the last one, which will be nice.
Yes, so we'll look at what might need to be purchased next year, but you'll know you have that money already in the budget.
Yep. Yes, that's recommended. The Article five is to raise and appropriate fifty-two thousand six-hundred-and-seventy-four for the second payment of a six-year lease. What is this lease for?
For the ambulance.
Oh, it, I don't think it says ambulance.
It doesn't.
Nope, well, it's going to. It's going to tomorrow. Maybe tonight if I'm here late.
And that takes care of that.
I was like a little confused. I'm like, what this is for?
Yes, the budget committee would certainly let me know about that.
Okay, so this is for the second payment of the six-year lease for the ambulance.
Ambulance, yeah.
Do we have a motion?
Thank you.
Question.
Yes.
Article five, what's it, what's it for?
It's for the ambulance.
Where does it say ambulance?
It doesn't. Karen's gonna put it in there.
I'm gonna add the word.
Some kind of a delayed echo in the end.
I'll be deaf for it, ain't stupid.
Oh, I know. We were all like, what is it for? Okay, so do we have a motion?
I think we got that covered.
Yeah, do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's. Okay, I'll see if I can speak. Article six is to raise and appropriate thirty-three thousand four-hundred-and-seventy-three for the second payment of the two police vehicles. Okay, do we have a motion on that?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Five to nothing. Article seven, to see if the town will raise and appropriate two-hundred thousand for the purpose of improvements to Dam Site Road. The entire amount will come from the unassigned fund balance, so tax impact is zero. Do we have a motion?
We'll check.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, five to zero. Article eight, raise and appropriate five thousand for the Parks and Rec Facility Capital Reserve Fund. Current balance thirty-nine thousand two eighty-six. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ed?
Stay.
Okay, so it's four, zero, one.
Yep.
To, Article nine is to raise and appropriate fifty thousand to be placed in the Bridge Construction Capital Reserve Fund.
Balance is three ninety-three.
Do you know what the balance is?
Yes.
Yeah, that had it handed out, or was that the?
Yes, we're still waiting for our funds from the state of New Hampshire that.
Oh, that could take a while.
Yes, I sent them the original letter in June of last year, and I've been following up. I've been told that, um, they were gonna really, really look at that and, and get it sent right to us, but it's three-hundred-and-forty-two thousand dollars.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so.
Yes, but I'm not going to show that because that's not what I have in my hand.
Right. Did you have to sign over your firstborn yet?
I know.
Every time I deal with them, it's like, we need this, we need that, we need that.
We're not getting much with that three dollars and ninety-three cents.
Might get a little pebble from it.
Karen, how much was that again, Ayo?
It's three-hundred-and-forty-two thousand and change.
Thanks.
Do we have a motion?
I gotta know, though.
Yeah.
We'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Did you vote no?
You are? Okay.
Okay, so four to one.
Fifty thousand dollars isn't gonna do anything if we have a bridge problem right now.
Oh, well, I mean, it's gonna be added to the three-hundred-and-forty-two.
Right. Once we get to three-hundred-and-ninety-four, whatever it is, that should be okay.
Yeah, right.
Maybe we'll have it back.
Oh, we, yes, hope, I, I'm sure we'll have it before town meeting.
Careful what you say.
All right, Article ten is to raise and appropriate two-hundred thousand for the road paving and maintenance. Do we have a motion? Current balance seventeen thousand five ninety-seven.
Make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's five to zero. Article eleven, to raise and appropriate one-hundred thousand dollars to be placed in the Highway Department Heavy Equipment Fund. Current balance seven thousand three fifty-nine. I think that was the one that we increased by the twenty-five thousand.
Yes, and the only reason this balance is so low is because we, we bought the new diesel truck. And again, we're waiting for the reimbursement of forty-two thousand dollars, so.
So I'll go back up. Okay, did I already do a motion in a second?
No.
Okay, I'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, five to zero.
Okay, and for the next one, if I made copies, I, as you know, we took the roller, the lease roller, out of the highway budget, put it down here as a warrant article. So I did get some figures from our leasing company for three years, four years, and five years. So if you wanna take one and pass it down, it shows you what the yearly payment would be.
Lease to own.
Lease to own. So you could do three, four, or five years. Right now, this warrant article is showing three years. But you can certainly pick whatever you want. You can see. Um, but you can certainly pick whatever you want. You can see out to the left, um, I wrote what the, uh, full amount would be at the interest rate, and then out to the far right, it shows each year what that interest payment would be. So if you did it for five years, your interest is going to be 8,900. If you only did it for three, your interest is going to be 4,168, so.
Right now, the warrant article, it's three years.
Yeah.
Correct.
Because the interest more than doubles three to five years.
Right.
Yeah.
But the payment drops a good significant amount.
Yeah.
That kind of weighs, what's the?
11. 12.
Yeah. So what is the wish of the board? Three, four, or five year?
This, this previous article? 11.
Right.
That's asking to put money into this capital reserve.
Right.
And then we're going to take it from the capital reserve?
Yes, and if you see, the balance is only 7,000, so you have to put the money in.
Yeah.
Vote to put the money in before you can take money out. That's why it.
Okay, but if this one fails, then the money won't be there.
Correct. Then 12 will be probably passed over.
Right.
So you, you, when we discuss it, we're going to discuss probably both our 11 and 12 together, and then vote separate.
And they've always voted to put money, they know, um, you know, how important that fund is. And at town meeting and probably at Budget Committee, um, the road agent and I will have a list of when the replacement vehicles will be coming up and why it's important to fund this at that level.
So we can make it known what we've been paying to rent.
Right, exactly.
It's gone down the, gone down the tubes, at least now we'll be renting to own.
Article 12 talks about fire rescue.
No, it's the highway, highway department.
Yeah, do you have an old one?
I must, because mine says fire rescue. All right.
For number 12?
Yes.
Can I give her?
I've got more than one copy, so let's see if this one says something different. Nope, I got another one.
Okay, is that the right one?
Yep. That one has it right, yep.
Yeah, because I grabbed one from the copy.
So a thought, if you will, is if you want to start and do, uh, say the five-year and start with a payment low, you'd always have the option if there's monies left over or, you know, that you want to encumber funds or buy it out. That's an option that
Well.
that would lower the, um, amount coming out of the.
If we, if we do a four-year.
Heavy equipment fund. Either way.
If we do a four-year, we save about $8,000 for the year. Right?
Yeah, you do.
And then if you do a five, you're really only saving $4,000 but paying more in interest.
Well, yeah, but that's, that's over the, is the, 8,000 is over the full course of the five years.
Of the whole five year.
Yeah.
Yes, per year, right.
Seems, seems to me that.
But you could, you could also.
It'd be beneficial to do the four-year.
Save the, the 12,000, for example, and pay it, because there's no early payoff penalties, right?
No.
For leasing.
No.
Pay it off in the three years, and then you're actually saving a ton of interest, I think, right?
Right, you are, and remember, next year you won't have the $85,000 fire pumper payment in there.
Right.
So you'll be able to reduce, reduce that budget next year. That's why I thought the three-year would make sense.
Yeah.
You have money in there.
I'm, I'm fine anyway, actually. I'm just thinking if, um, pulling the 33,000, well, we're going to get reimbursed though, so. That's actually going to go up, right?
Yeah, but.
Okay.
Yes, because we're going to get 42 back, so, I mean, there's 49,000 dollars. Right, in there, and then with the 100, you'd make it 149, and then you'd just take 33 from that.
Yeah.
You'd still have over 100,000 in there.
Well, I'm actually good with the three-year. Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We go with the three-year lease agreement.
Do we have a second?
I'm sorry, I'll make a motion. We go with the three-year agreement.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Knew you were going to do that.
Okay, so that was 5-2-0.
So that's the three-year.
Yes.
Okay.
Three-year lease. So the article remain as written.
Yep.
All right, Article 13 is to raise and appropriate 50,000 to go in the Fire Rescue Expendable Trust Fund. Current balance 152,018. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. 5-0. All right, um, this is to raise and appropriate $2,500 for the Barnstead 300 Year Celebration Expendable Trust Fund. Current balance 18,068.
Move this article to be accepted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Um, Article 15, raise and appropriate $5,000 to be placed in the Historical Society Building Capital Reserve Fund. Current balance 64,762. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Is anyone going to second this? You can second it, and then you can not recommend it when you vote.
Want an explanation from me?
Yeah, well, you can give me an explanation after you second it.
I'm not going to second it.
All right, I'm going to second it for discussion.
There you go.
Okay.
As you may or may not remember, I've supported the Historical Society for years, years, years. I even presented an article to the voters two years back. The Fringes, pick them properly for Historical Society. The Historical Society voted again. So until the Historical Society comes up with a plan, what they want to do, where they want to do it, I am going to abstain. Doesn't mean I object, or don't support the Historical Society, but they better start showing me, I've stuck my head out and put my head on the chopping block before, and I'm not going to do it again until they tell me what they want.
Okay.
No, I won't second.
It's okay, I seconded it, so. Okay. All righty.
I understand, I definitely understand your concern, Ed. I don't blame, by, in your shoes, I may feel the same way, but I think putting a little money aside each year, I mean, I know they need a plan, but at least we'll have something to go forward with.
Great idea.
Yeah.
Great idea. It shouldn't be $10,000. But what are you going to do with it? What do you want to do with it?
I think we were right. I think they need a plan.
And I don't think they used any of it last year, right?
No.
Well, they haven't used any of it forever.
Well, and that's not a bad thing until they do have a plan. But when you get a plan, you have to have something at least to start with.
The other thing is, I, I guess I'd like to hear more, and I probably will, from other members of the Historical Society, other than the one that presented this.
Okay.
This is, this is, uh, a feel-good article. You know, rah rah. One more.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on it? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, and all those abstaining?
Aye.
It's not recommended. Well, it's 2-2-1. It's not recommended.
So, if, if you're not recommending it, does it still get placed?
I believe it, it still gets placed because the town will vote on it. It's just not going to be recommended by the Select Board because the motion failed.
All right, so it's.
It'll still stay because the Budget Committee could recommend it, though. Because the, it's, it's the Budget Committee's budget at the town meeting, so.
And three said no.
No.
So it's 2-2 and one extension.
Ed abstained.
My no is, I feel exactly as Ed feels, and he knows more about it than I do. I'm all for Historical Society, but the money, and I get it, we want money there at some point, but it's only a year. It's 5,000, can get put back in there, and that's my feeling.
So what, so it'll show on the warrant, this is not recommended, and then the 2-2, one extension.
Just not recommended, right.
But at least for the Select Board, so.
Uh huh.
So what? I mean, obviously, because it's not recommended, what we wanting? Ed will speak to it, I'm sure.
Oh, yes, he will.
Okay. All right, so Article 16, uh, this is to raise and appropriate 75,000 to be placed in the Public Safety Building Capital Reserve. Current balance 276,752. Do we have a motion?
Move this article to be accepted.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's five. I better write my 2-2-1. Um, Article 17 is to place $1 in the Emergency Preparedness Expendable Trust Fund. Current balance 26,609.
That's a tough one.
How come there is a balance?
Just.
Has it not been used at all?
Right. I think we originally opened it with 25,000, uh, and then maybe had used some, put some back, and then it's been a dollar for quite some time just because we were lucky enough not to have to.
Tap into it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Check out Article 7.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Is seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
5-0. Uh, Article 18 is to raise and appropriate 15,000 to be placed in Municipal Computer and Equipment Expendable Trust. Current balance 14,838. Do we have a motion?
Question?
Yes.
Is this for the purchase or replacement of a new computer system? Or is it just for repairs?
All of the above, and it's not just for town hall, it's all the computer systems in every department.
Including the library?
No, the library has a separate, their own separate capital reserve.
Yeah, it's Article 20.
Yep.
So do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Do we have a second? I'll second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In unanimous, 5. All right, Article 19, um, to raise and appropriate 36,000 to be placed in the Mill Foil Treatment Expendable Trust Fund. Current balance 32,751. Do we have a motion?
We'll accept.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Um, have we, do we know that these, all the interested parties are, have had discussion about this and how it's going to be spent? And who's getting what, and everybody is on the same page? Yes, I emailed Ed Neester. Ed emailed me back and CC'd Lock Lake, Amy at DES, and, um, the email said that Lock Lake was not able to, um, be able to apply for the grant for this year. And they're okay with that. Um, and actually, both Ed and the Lock Lake, um, person that will be speaking to this will, um, be going before Budget Committee, uh, I think, on the 4, uh, the 3rd. And so they're okay, Lock Lake is okay with the 6,000 that we typically gave them every year anyway. And then the rest is for the divers, the dash mobile, and the treatment.
And there was some discussion that the last time about the divers, the dash divers and, and Lock Lake getting some use of that too, has that been resolved as well?
I, I didn't go into detail, and Ed did not either. Certainly, it's a question I can ask him tomorrow, but they were all on the same page and agreeable.
6,000 for the divers. Right. Because they're not really doing any chemical treatment. It's all pulling. So, the whole thing.
The 6,000?
Yeah.
They send every year before I can pay out the 6,000, they have to send in all the invoices showing they've paid. And, um, typically, the invoices are for the treatment that they've done, but it also includes, um, diving or whatever. As long as their expenses come to at least 6,000, then we write, write the check to reimburse them.
Okay. Was there any further discussion? I did do a motion in a second. I totally lost myself there. Okay, great. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those, any opposed? Nope, okay, unanimous. Um, Article 20 is, uh, to raise and appropriate 4,000 to be placed in the Library Computer Support Trust Fund. Current balance 1,0241. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
No.
No? You opposed? Okay, so 4-1. All right, Article 21, uh, to raise and appropriate the amount of $10,000 to be placed in the Sister and Construction and Maintenance Fund. Current balance 55,617. Do we have a motion?
We'll accept Article 21.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? All right. And I think that is it. Holy moly, that could be a really fast meeting this year.
No, you still got 22.
Don't we have 22?
No, we're only doing the money articles that we.
I mean, you.
Oh, the annual lease agreement?
Right, because it is an agreement.
Yeah. Okay, uh, to approve the annual lease between the town and Butler Bus Company um, on South Barnstead Road. Okay, to approve the annual lease between the town and Butler Bus Company on South Barnstead Road. Only question is, I think we may, do we know if the school district signed the agreement with Butler Bus yet?
Okay, so maybe I'll reword this.
Leave the name out.
Yeah. To approve an annual lease agreement as determined by whatever, the school. Okay, I'll reword that.
Unless we happen to find out prior to next week that they signed with Butler Bus. I don't know. Okay.
It's going out to Ed.
Figure is this year.
Tough. There are no drivers.
I mean, basically, all this is.
Anywhere.
This is, the reason you have to vote on this is because they're using town land to park on.
Right.
So it doesn't matter who they sign the agreement with. I'm sure the buses are still going to park there. So I'll reword it, and is that okay, Ed?
It did a nice job, like, you know, modifying it, putting the little building in, and.
Yes, I know.
The question that will, that will keep this going, and why don't the buses say, "Bastards" for those that are on?
Because we're not buying a bus.
Yeah. Don't they say?
Well, not yet.
District down there? They say Butler or Barnstead, I don't even know.
Says Butler on it.
Okay, so that is it for the warrant articles.
Okay.
We don't do twenty-three?
Did someone make a motion?
Oh, yeah, did someone make a motion in a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. So what?
And we don't do the final article because we don't, A, we don't have an amount, but that's the Budget Committee's number, so.
We don't do the noise ordinance?
They'll decide that. No, because we're only doing the money articles right now.
Right, and so I have the noise ordinance, so the draft, I'll send it out to you.
Oh, great.
Most importantly, I'll send it off to have the attorney just look at it and make sure.
Perfect.
So we don't have any articles this year to make, like, roads, you know, the town take over the roads, or, you know, buy property or anything like that?
No, because we haven't, unfortunately, we hadn't been able to go forward with sales. I've had a lot of people, the abutting properties, reach out to me, people that have been on the list and are interested. So I hope with the, the change in the office, with the planning board person now in place, that Mary Jane will be able to reach out and, and we can get some of these sales done. And no, they do not have to be warrant articles.
Yeah, only the ones that are gifted.
Right, as long as they're deeded properties, you don't have to, but I do.
We do have to approve them, though, right?
Um, you will, they will take place in non-public session, and the board will then vote to do it. But, yeah, it just doesn't have to be a warrant article. However, this is the warrant article that came from Parks and Rec, and I know you've already discussed it, and you voted not to put it on as a warrant article. They were requesting that they change the membership from five commissioners to seven commissioners and four alternates. If you want to just look at that, that's. But I know you've already said that you were not going to place it on as a, you know, you were not going to put it on as a warrant article.
Are they going to do a petition?
They would still have the option of doing a petition. However, they have to get that, they would have to get the petition in by February third.
Now, have you had conversation with them to let them know we're not putting it on the ballot?
No, I have not had, except David Allen was in today, and I gave him a copy of the budget and show, told him that they were supporting the Parks and Rec Capital Reserve and what his budget was, but I did not.
Because, I mean, in reality, Parks and Rec is the town, but not the, the commission is separate. Is the commission not supposed to be separate as far as they, what they want to do is, is making it a nonprofit or, or whatever it is that they're doing, right?
Well, that is totally different. They're, they're friends of the Parks and Rec or whatever they're.
And they can't co-mingle.
Right.
Yeah.
That's totally different from this. They just want to increase the, the numbers. The original warrant article that went in to create the commission was specific to five. You know, we follow the statute, and we gave them limited powers. They want to now just increase the number of commissioners and the number of alternates. I mean, I don't know that they're, they're fully staffed. They may be. I, I know anytime they bring someone on, they, that, we can't stress enough that people have to come in and get background checks. You know, they work with children, so. You could always put it on as a warrant article and let the town vote on it.
And just not do a recommendation, but.
Yes, if you would like to do that, because it is, it is rather a short amount of time to try to get a petition done. They would have to get at least twenty-five registered voters.
Twenty, they need twenty-five registered voters.
Signatures, right. Between now and February third. I mean, if you're okay with that, I will gladly ask him to just go out and, and get the petition and submit it.
And they have to do a warrant article to increase the size of it?
Yes, because the warrant article that created the commission was very specific to five people. Now, they can still have all the volunteers they want.
Right.
I'm not sure of the purpose of also.
I don't get it either.
Alternates.
Four alternates and seven members, no way.
Well, my, my guess is that the alternates are for when individuals, kind of like alternates to the planning board or the zoning board, if the member can't be there, the alternate can serve and vote. That would be my idea that that is the point of alternates.
They've got five of them, I mean.
They've got seven now, right?
Well, they, they want.
Right, that's what they're asking for. It has to pass town meeting, though.
So do you want to just put it on the warrant with no recommendation from the select board? Or do you want to vote on it?
No.
Entirely up to the board.
I mean, the, the commission's already functioning and in its existence, so I don't think the town necessarily, or the select board, has to make a recommendation on it. It's already a functioning committee.
Yep.
So they're just changing the language, so I don't think we need to do a recommendation, but we can make it a warrant article. They just have to speak to it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Is that something you're comfortable with? Not making a recommendation because it's already a standing committee, but they just have to speak to it. But it'll be listed in our list of warrants. Article. But it can be on the warrant. Yeah, okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, so we can just let David know it'll be on the warrant, but he'll.
So we are going to add it.
Yeah, they'll add it to the warrant. No recommendation.
No recommendation.
Because it's already a standing committee anyways.
Okay.
And then they can speak to it.
Okay.
And if you disagree with it, you can speak to it, too. All right, warrant articles are done. What else do we have here?
You will have one non-public.
I would have moved a whole lot faster if I knew that.
It's going to be quick.
Okay, we have to open up public input. Does anyone have any public input? Going one? Anyone out there? Hi, Liz. Okay, we're going to.
Hi, everybody. Good job tonight. Good job.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? That's hard, because you know what? We can't hear it now, so.
Turn it up.
You don't want to blow Ed out of that. Okay, all right, so we're going to close public input at six twenty-seven, and I'll take a motion to go into non-public under RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two.
B.
B, which is.
Hiring.
Hiring. Ed. Oh, wait, we have a second. There was a second? Okay, Ed.
Aye.
Right. Diane, yes, Paula?
Aye.
Okay, we are in non-public. Thank you.